We're ready.
One, two, three.
Oh.
There we go.
Good evening, welcome to the Plan Board Meeting for Tuesday, August 2nd. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
The real call members, Tom Young, Chair.
Russell Blanchett, Member.
Kimberly Queenen, Member.
David Samuel, Member.
Ty- Tyler Perrin, Alternate.
Steve Perry, Selecting Right.
Not with us tonight is Mike Crowdo, Matt Shoemaker.
Who knew you all would give me the rocking chair?
A little noisy, aren't we?
I always get this chair.
Seeing there's no members of the public present. Joe, do you like to write down the list from the top or?
Sure.
Okay.
So these are all the little bits and pieces of things we've heard along the way that may need some adjusting or amending or consideration. The first, the first one is the accessory dwelling unit ordinance. It's section five oh seven of your zoning ordinance. And this past year, the New Hampshire Legislature passed Senate Bill one forty-six that sets some minimum standards for accessory dwelling units for all municipalities in New Hampshire. So I've done just a side by side comparison of the bill language and the town's ordinance just to try and flag some areas that need your attention and may need some updating. This is Cassie. Cassie's, uh, was here for a previous. And she's just hanging out following and learning from all of us. We've just barely started on accessory dwelling units. You want me to like walk through some of the key provisions from the bill that
Yeah.
might be, you know, affect things? So all I highlighted within the bill language itself were those things where there was some attention warranted. If I didn't highlight it, then it seemed like everything matched up just fine with what we have. So there's no need for concern. Highlighted the definition, just because we now have a statutory definition of what an accessory dwelling unit is. We may as well look at and use the standard definition. Another clause that just made me kind of question how to incorporate it. If you look six seventy-four, colon seventy-two, Roman one, midway through there, it's page two of the bill. It says, "In all zoning districts that permit single-family dwellings." So I went to the, at least just went to the residential district. I probably want to look at all the other districts. If it says, "Single-family residential as a permitted use," we should add and accessory dwelling units or add accessory dwelling units to the list. Kind of going down the list there, still in the bill, Roman eight. "A municipality may not require a familial relationship between the occupants of an accessory dwelling unit and the occupants of a principal dwelling unit." That's one where there's a few provisions that we have. If you look at the third page of your PDF of the zoning ordinance, I go to section five oh seven point oh three. We've got family member, family caregiver. Then you go down five oh seven point oh four. Performance standards, accessory dwelling units shall meet following criteria. Is non-rental housing for owner occupant, family members, or a family caregiver?
I had a question on
Yeah.
that on five oh seven oh four.
Mm-hmm.
It says, "The owner of the property shall occupy either the primary or secondary dwelling unit and provide documentation. The occupants meet the definition of family member or family caregiver."
Mm-hmm.
In the original bill, it said, "A municipality may not require
Correct.
a familial relationship between the occupants of an accessory dwelling unit and the occupants of a principal dwelling unit."
Correct.
So can you help me?
So this is what we have on the books now.
Okay.
And this is what the legislature said
So very clearly.
we should be doing.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you for reconciling that.
So I mean, at this point, folks have to prove to you that they're related, correct?
Make them do a blood test.
Yeah, perhaps.
Yeah, but.
Big change.
Can an accessory dwelling be a camper with a door that enters a door from the side of a house?
No.
Why not?
Why? Because you
Well, if you hammer a piece of wood between the two.
Because you still have to meet building code standards for an accessory dwelling unit.
Hammer a piece of wood between the two, that would be connective.
Kevin, what a trailer, or a camper meets building code.
The devil is talking right at the moment. The devil is talking.
I had to ask.
No, in fact, the legislature was clear to say that all standards, all building standards that apply to single-family units shall apply to accessory dwelling units. So it cannot be kind of inferior or substandard construction. It still needs to meet life safety concerns.
All buildings do.
Yes, exactly.
That's not an
So I guess where the real question comes from is, are we allowed, I mean, they pretty much dictate what we are and aren't allowed to do. Are we allowed to set restrictions such as like only one door per side of a home? So then you don't have more than one front door? Because an accessory dwelling unit could sometimes
Look like a two-family.
end up looking like a two-family.
Right. I don't believe there's anything to that. And I would hesitate to say only one door per side because depending on how the unit is configured or not, you know, who knows where they got their secondary egress? And would you consider a basement bulkhead a door if you have, so?
That's not considered as a means of regret, only a means of
I just asked sort of stock's thought to go forward because
And I didn't, I think you already have something here that you've got to maintain the single-family character of the dwelling and conforming with the character of the neighborhood. I don't think there's anything wrong with that. You still have to have an internal door connecting the primary and secondary dwelling units. I don't know if you can say that it's to facilitate family interaction. But the intent is it's accessory, it's secondary to the home. And that home remains a single-family home and it needs to be able to convert back to a single-family home.
But you can One of the things, so that you understand what's going on now, I got three or four that are being proposed to me right now. We're keeping the same character, okay? I try to get doors to be, I don't want it to look like two driveways, two doors, duplex. That's not the purpose of the regulation. We're clear on that here, okay? We're trying to keep it like that. The state has threw a zinger into it, I'll say this. When you get rid of the owner occupied tenant situation, you know what I'm saying? They don't have to be blood anymore. Ninety percent of the people will do it, right? They only get into rental, okay? But I try to make them look like it's a single-family home. They may have a, I make them put a farmer's porch up to interconnect it so that it looks like one, okay? They may have two doors in the front like some houses do, but I try to blend it in and they're all for the idea. So it's a good thing, you know? The state law has put a zinger into it, Steve, I must say that. The purpose, it's going to be tougher.
Looks like everything that we do, we seem to do things and we have one set, one mind frame when we do it. And it doesn't take long and state puts down something and everything gets blown up. So it's no longer the way it was originally perceived. Now it's a rental unit.
Which it is.
Essentially.
Roman numer, uh, ten, for rental units. Okay?
It may be.
Yeah, it may be, but still, maybe for rental units. Whole purpose of the state doing this for workforce housing.
Yep.
That was right from the beginning of the whole conversation.
Yeah, it's that and it's the aging population and making sure that, because, so you guys have had an accessory dwelling unit ordinance. There are other communities that have flat out said, "No." So then where do you put grandma when she wants to move in? Or where do you put the parents when they, you know, when you need to bring them into your home, but you want to give them space, right? So that was, that's why you guys adopted an ordinance of this.
I actually wasn't a big fan of it.
Oh, okay.
Because I always said, "If somebody's going to live in my house, they're going to live with me." But I'm one of those kind of weird people, you know?
That likes your family?
Steve did the right thing, he said the right thing. I did the same with my mother-in-law, put the addition on for her.
Yeah.
And everything, she lived with us, we cooked for her and everything else. Steve cooked, I didn't want her house not unless she died. That didn't last it five, six, seven years and she went to a nursing home. Ended up on an addition I didn't really want, but I got it. I think what the legislative has done is because so many towns have just restricted that by zoning, nothing, 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 okay? They said, "Wait a minute, you're family." I got two cases right now where people are looking to buy a house. They're looking at putting a accessory dwelling in as well, okay? This actually helps them because the legislators know, it helps them to do with the two-bedroom because I have older people that don't sleep together anymore, okay? So if one snores, the other one doesn't, I don't know, okay? But that's what I'm running across, okay? So guys, and the other thing you're going to run across, your kids leave. They're coming back, okay? They never used to come back because the, they're, they think college is the greatest thing in the world and they go broke doing it, okay? And then they go out in the real world, they come back and they can't make it because of the bills. So they're all coming, a lot of kids are coming back. So they want to separate from mom and dad, rightfully so.
Mom and dad don't want them waking them up.
They got their own lives, so you got to work, work with them. Demographics have changed, it's not the seventies, the eighties and stuff like that, or the nine, the nineties anymore. The whole different con- concept.
So this doesn't come into effect until June of next year?
Yeah, but think about town meeting.
I'm going to bring it into compliance at town meeting.
You got to be in compliance by June of next year.
So we have to bring it to town meeting?
Right.
Got it. Forgot about that.
They gave you a grace period and acknowledged somehow it's not made town meeting.
They wouldn't even bother making you bring it to the people, right?
Well, technically, the state law supersedes your ordinance and invalidates it.
Yes, you don't even have to ask.
That's correct.
But if you want to enforce your ordinance.
Or something to work with, with the, you've got a good part of the ordinance which is, you're not more restrictive in the regulation other than
The familial.
bedrooms and that's about it. Most of the time, and the family kin- kinship has to change a little bit.
Is there even a bedroom requirement?
Pardon me?
Is there even a bedroom requirement?
Nope.
Yeah, so I think you're all set there. I think it's just the familial.
I think it's very simple.
Yeah.
Most of my people want to stay, they want to live separately in their own houses. I've even had a case where we kept a common area mingling where you owned the same door. That's got to change. So we put a side door on the porch where you can't see it so that they can have a little independence when they go into another house. That didn't work, they tried, but that one didn't work. I've become a counselor.
So folks, what's your pleasure?
I've read it, guys, I have no issues with it.
Yeah.
I spent the time this afternoon to go over it.
I think the changes are simple.
Yeah.
You just go into each district, look for where we have, um, single-family residences as a permitted use. Add accessory dwelling units.
The only area that's going to be a question is the transitional district
Yeah.
and that's with the multifamily that changed a little bit on that. So that's going to change too, Jen, I think on section five hundred, under districts. Or section three hundred. You got that transitional and with the multifamily, would they approve, that may change a little bit.
No, I think we'll be okay.
Okay.
Because it's just to the list of permitted uses, yeah.
As long as you get it in, that's all I care.
And then throughout the multif, throughout the accessory dwelling unit, update the authority section. Replace with the new definition. And then otherwise, anything that talks about family, it just gets struck and the rest remains
Same.
the same.
Yeah. One other thing I'd like to just say is that they did not allow, they did say if you wish to allow detached accessory dwelling units, you could, but if they are not required. The state made it clear that you're not required to have detached, okay?
And we don't have any provision for that in our existing ordinance, there's going to be to add that in.
I just want to throw it out as, you read it, you see detached in here?
Yeah.
It's not required. Jen did a nice job.
I didn't do anything yet, I just highlighted the stuff to think about.
Before we take a vote on that, Tyler, would you like to become a voting member this evening?
We don't need to vote.
No.
Okay, just
Talking about drafts.
I'll get him in just in case.
That you can do.
Yep.
Welcome to the club.
So how many workforce housing units do we pick up as a result of this change?
You call it, I've got about eight, nine out there that's more common.
Okay, good.
They're coming, we got a lot of big homes in certain parts of town, so I'm going to see more.
So we're still covered for our share of workforce housing for regional needs?
I don't know that you can say that.
Well, under this new, uh, this new regulation
Let's talk about that under master plan.
What was that?
Let's talk about that under master plan.
As long as we can do a quick tonight.
Yes.
I haven't done any data yet, so we'll keep it quick. The next thing on the list was graciously brought to our attention by your, your next applicant. Your next applicant. In a pre-application meeting, we said, "Are you going to submit a lighting plan?" He says, "Well, yes, I'll have lighting, but you know your lighting regulations are only applicable to non-residential development." And we, Joan and I looked at each other and went. So remember we went through the site plan regulations last year and we updated all the design sections to make sure they applied to both non-residential and multifamily? The lighting section is outside the design standard section. And we did not strike the word "non-residential." So that prompted me to say, "Well, why don't I want, add it, do a search for the word 'non-residential' throughout the entire site plan review regulations." So if you keep in mind, the site plan regulations were written when multifamily wasn't allowed. So they were written from the perspective of non-residential. But traditionally, site plan regulations are non-residential and multifamily. So the next item you have there is excerpts of your site plan regulations. And I have highlighted every time the word "non-residential" shows up. So I think at this point, the question for you is, what do you want to do? Some of them, I think it's more like a matter of just correcting the title of the document because in some places it's clearly referring to the title of the document and it refers to it as the "Non-Residential Site Plan Review Regulations" in which it should just say, "The Site Plan Review Regulations," which is the title. Other places, the question is, do you want it to apply to multifamily as well or just the non, um, non-residential? So for example, you have the definition of grandfathered, non-conforming, pre-existing luminaire. I'm not going to read the definition. All the way down at the bottom of your submission requirements, item V, it's the one, two, three, fourth page of the PDF. Item V says, "The number of non-residential units in each building with the floor area and proposed use for each unit." I would just say the number of units in each building because if you've got multifamily, you want to make sure they're telling you how many units are in the building. And then it gets into the lighting section. And so the big question is, do you think your lighting regulation is suitable to both multifamily and commercial development or or one versus the other?
I didn't see anything as I kind of read through it that indicated that non-residential versus residential made a lot of difference. I mean, like under general standards, one sixty-three point four. If you change that to lighting and lights from vehicular traffic associated with a a use, shall be shielded or buffered. I mean,
Yeah.
there's not a lot of difference there. I mean, you wouldn't want residential or non-residential to have glare or create glare problems.
Okay. Exactly. No one wants someone's traffic light shining in the front windows.
One thing I'd like to bring up, just above that on D.
Yep.
The grandfather luminaires.
Yep.
I take exception to that.
Okay.
Anytime you change a lamp
Yes.
and that fixture, you have to upgrade the fixture.
Okay.
Changing a lamp is the bulb.
Right.
That's a little strict.
Oh, good call.
It shows up a couple of places.
So it should just be the fixture.
Yeah, take a lamp out, just strike the wood lamp.
Yeah, 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 okay, good call.
Man, those LEDs I just put up are going to be off for you.
Okay.
I just changed the lamp.
And I don't know if you want to discuss other items here for now or not, but I found a typo, so.
Sure, I'll take a typo.
Hang on, I got to figure out where I highlighted it. One sixty-five twenty?
One sixty-five.
This is one of those things that's really knickknack, but there's a bunch of commas in the constitution that cause problems. So, um, "The planning board may waive these requirements in accordance with section, period." So
Yeah, thank you.
I realize it's a little bit knickknack.
No, I got you. Yes.
I just read it. She highlighted right above it, so I went to the sentence before, hey, I saw it.
Try and read the whole sentence if it doesn't make sense.
The whole English thing.
Any other thoughts in general? I mean, predominantly, as it was brought to our attention, it is just the lighting section that was neglected in that update with the exception of a couple of words here and there. There's also the telecommunication facility sightings requirements. And again, this is just, it's the title of the document. So that is a simple, straightforward item, and then same with submission requirements.
I just had a general question for Kevin and for you. Does this, do these changes increase the workload significantly for Kevin or for the town or anything else?
No, what's going to happen if people are going to change the light fixture?
It depends on the time because really it's not electrical, it's not a building code thing. You know, you've got to write to change a fixture or bulb or something that fails, okay? Like, "I was out here feeling a little tired." So they bring in, light guys go in and go and change it. It's not a major thing. If you get a complaint of glare similar to what we had at the local prior house when they put up the two one-thousand watt floods there a few years back. Then we have a little question on that one.
Okay.
Yeah, one sixty-three fifteen.
Okay.
D is the other place that shows up on the grandfather
Yep.
for the lamp.
Okay. That's easier now.
How come grandfathers find out all the time?
You go to the prior page. Where we get into the typical exterior lighting. I guess the traditional post looks somewhat residential.
Are you in a
I'm just, I'm at the, like, the whole chunk of pictures of examples. I think some of them look residential, but by and large, most of them look very parking lot. So we might want one or two additional examples that are more residential in neighbor, in character. Because these are just provided as examples anyways, but just so that we're not kind of giving folks the impression that we want a very commercial or industrial looking
The only two they have that are residential is the in-ground and the traditional post.
Yeah.
Area post, period? Area post, period?
Area post, yeah.
They're going to additional post and the wall packs are residential.
Yeah.
Especially if you get into a residential
Yeah.
parking area or something like that. But for the rest of them, even the cobras are your basic streetlight. That's what they put in, just like we got here, the Cobra lights. That's what the streetlights on.
Oh, okay.
Okay? They're all residential. The only one that's not is the mini mart. The ballads are residential and some types are residential, not in your one and two family. Your high mast is for the other, wherever you want to put the rest. Your in-ground is for
Black. Black. No, shrubbery. Front and side of a house. Some people like to light up their house so everybody can see it.
And sometimes it looks very nice.
I installed many of them, Kevin, sometimes does, especially at Christmas time.
I just hit a flag.
I wasn't going to say anything. Good job, Steve. You leave me over here, it's twice you got me.
All right.
Couldn't add on to that. You get enough range of everything, so.
Hey, Tom, using your electrician hat there. One sixty-three point seven, would you not say that is fixtures? Or no, actually, no, we are talking lamps here, never mind. It was all fixtures before, but now it is lamps.
Seven.
Seven, it is lamp.
The lamps, yeah, the lamps.
Yeah, that's just the types of lamps.
Yeah, you don't want something that's going to blind everyone.
Right.
Okay.
These are residential.
You don't want Zeon lighting out there that they use for the searchlights.
No, we don't want that. All right. That's site plan review. The next one takes up less paper, but might take up more time. Appendix A, road construction. It was brought to our attention that for the majority of residential roadway construction, the engineers and builders no longer utilize the cross-sections that we require every 50 feet. Instead, the engineer provides the builder a CD with all of the all of the design requirements. And it essentially is embedded with three-dimensional information. So that they know no matter where they are along the roadway, what the heights are, what the contours are, and how the design, how the design or how the road should be constructed. And so the provision of cross-sections aren't used for anything but the purpose of submitting to you the board. It was also said, though, at the same time, but on a major collector road or something like Albuquerque, you might still want that information. So the, I guess the point of conversation is, I don't think it's a one-size-fits-all solution. If we were to say, okay, some things don't require cross-sections, do we leave the cross-sections requirement in and say to a developer, make your case for a waiver? If you don't think it's applicable? Do you say something along the lines of provide us your typical cross-section? And then anywhere that might deviate from or from the typical, then provide us cross-sections at those particular locations. That might be another way to approach it. So you have a lot more pages here than just the one page that would actually be affected simply because I didn't wanna pull that one page without the context of what else you have in appendix A. And I was hoping that we'd get some input from Lou. I don't know, I think he's just barely back from vacation. So I don't know if he's had a chance to kinda share his additional thoughts on this or not, or if Joan had reached out to him yet.
They can always ask for waivers.
I know.
Why would we pull it out? What's our benefit? Because it doesn't sound like we benefit.
I don't use them, I don't know if Lou uses them.
Lou does use them.
All the cross-sections, every 50 feet.
Well, I know that that's
It's technology, it's a change.
He does call attention to them when he's doing his plan reviews.
Like Pine Creek, you do.
We used to do this for years when I did design, we used to do the cross-sections because there was no other way of passing the information on to the developer or the builder, builder. Today, we don't do them as much because the technology is on a disk. Where you run the section, every 50 feet, you go boom, and you give it to the disk and they can take it from there. It's a matter of, most towns, there's, some towns that don't even require it. Or they find it's unnecessary, as long as you got the grade of the road, you know what's gonna happen one side or the other in the layout. You know, maybe don't do the 50 foot at all. I know in the two towns that I worked with, we never did it because we didn't find it necessary. But with today's technology, with electronics in the field, they take that data, plug it into the system, they can shoot all the grades the same way. That's why, that's why you don't see it as much. It was a tool, we used tape and rod. Now they don't use tape and rod, they use electronic GPS systems, so. It's all about the technology. Our regulations are written at the time when technology was lower. Now it's more severe. I rejoice.
I just don't know how we benefit by taking it out. Just say, ask for a waiver.
I'm okay with that.
I'm fine.
It's one less thing for Lou to review. A less piece of information he has to go through to feed back to us to say he adds compliant.
Wouldn't you rather him have all the information possible?
He can get a disk if he needs it, like they're gonna give to the guy in the field.
He would ask, he would ask for the disk.
Yeah, he would ask.
If it would make his life easier.
Correct.
And he would just ignore the cross-sections if he didn't need them then.
Yep.
Unless the cross-sections are required to be presented to him, in which case he'd have to defer to the cross-sections, not to the disk.
And the question would be from Lou's review perspective and the time required, how, what is the, I mean, the applicant is billed for Lou's review time. But how much more time would it take Lou to pull the cross-sections? From the, you know, the electronic data versus them to just have them already on a sheet? I mean, I know it's pretty time-consuming for them to get them all pulled and laid out on a sheet.
They can't just cut and paste from the disk.
Well, no, you do the plan, you do five or six pages of just those cross-sections. It's labor-intensive.
You have to lay, yeah, you have to pull each one, lay it out on a sheet, go in, pull the next one, lay it out.
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
Click.
You risk repetitive strain injury.
Plus, if he gets the disk and he puts it into his iPad in the field or whatever he's got, they're gonna be there.
Right.
Papers, we saved another tree. We cut another road into the woods.
I tend to think that if, if the question is Lou, then maybe Lou helps us find the answer.
Oh, yeah, until Lou, if Lou said he didn't need them, it'd be a different story.
Right.
That's right.
We don't have that answer, so.
No.
Nope.
Defer it?
Defer.
Defer.
Okay, that's easy enough. Um, next one was minimum lot requirements. Last year, as part of going through and reviewing everything, we pulled all the minimum lot requirements up to the front into a table. Kevin has expressed some concerns with that and so has requested that we look at that.
Here's what I ran across. I have a guy applying to the board for a setback. Resident, resident, so the case is tomorrow night. The way I had to write it up. It goes back to setbacks in the Ozone, 502-6, whatever it is, okay? And then I refer to districts 300, and that's where the chart is located and the numbers for it. What happened on this when it went out, I can understand how the chair wrote up the zoning hearing. He referred to the 502 because it says setbacks. Fully understand where he did it, okay? But it doesn't say anything in setbacks in that section where they are. Does not. We put it in Ozon and District 300. So what I, for a legal point of view, because we got lawyers who sit on boards and they pick things apart, I think we ought to put the sections, the setback section in chart form in the setback district section of whatever district it's in. And that's not a change to the zoning at all. It's just taking this and putting it into the district and giving it a chart number like we do in most code books or most law books, they refer to a table in that zone section. And this is the table.
Yep.
Okay? I like to see it that way, under the setback section in each one. Or unless, if you wanna go back, but it's, this isn't a wrong district, in my opinion. Because you're, you have it in districts and all you say is zoning, and it goes down through and the boundaries of each permitted such and such. I'm just trying to be a little simple here. Put it into that one where it is underneath that section and we're all done. And that's just a cut and paste. I believe it would be in the operations to put it in. Other side of that, in the residential districts, we should refer to, bring that residential stuff into that district as the multifamily into that district. Highway, commercial, under that, just those setbacks and stuff like that, transitional. Simply, it's a cut and paste. No change to the zoning, no nothing, it's just relocating it, is what I'm thinking.
And assigning a definition to that table, table 1-1, table 1-2. So it has that reference that we can
When I look it up now, I gotta go, I'm in 5.02. It says setbacks, okay? And it has, it only refers to stuff done prior to exempt and everything else. But then it doesn't refer to what they are in that district. Okay? And the same thing with the commercial, the multifamily, highway, stuff like that. Trying to put it back so that when you look at it, you're gonna look at that district and that's where it is instead of flipping, going from the front to rear, front to rear, front to rear, it's there. And I thought it'd be a simple cut and paste to put it all in place. I'll get Jen what I think in the district should be, and I'll give it to you. And I'll just tape it into a piece of paper with tape, show you where it's gonna be.
When we did this, we thought we were trying to make it simplified by having them all in one place and then reference them back.
Yeah, but it doesn't reference back. Nothing in that setback section ref- reference back to this thing.
Did you change this or is what, it's highlighted in yellow, is just
It's just highlighted to flag everything that references dimensional standards throughout the ordinance.
I'm here tomorrow night to explain certain
So in section 502, lot requirements.
Yep.
First thing under it, refer to section 300 for additional dimensional requirements.
Correct.
Doesn't say any setbacks.
So what if we just change that to have a table reference number? Refer to section 300, table 1-1.
Fine.
I mean, you're still flipping pages a lot, but you've got that legal definition, so that does help you.
It does help me.
I would even say that I would, I might take that first, first page there, leave it 300 districts and then number the table so that it's got a section, an actual section heading, so it's, you know, 310 dimensional requirements. So it gets called out in the table of contents.
In the residential zone.
And then you can, then you can say, refer to section 310 for dimensional requirements. Additional requirements are as follows.
And it should be in the zoning district zones, residential use, da-da-da-da-da, you can do that. And this, you can give it a number all the way down through.
Yeah, so like 502 that says setbacks.
Yep.
That's really, it's grandfathered structures.
That's correct.
Not, it's not really setbacks, it's grandfathered
Yep.
Items.
Right, I had to come back with a section.
Unfortunately, no matter what, if we move, even just moving things around, has to go to town meeting.
Really?
Yes.
Not changing the zoning.
It's not a substantive change, it's a clerical change that requires
Clerical change.
Town hearing.
You'd end up having to create a new number or something in the
That's just a clerical change, still.
Because all we did was move things around, well, we changed the, the
We did just a few setbacks.
We changed the setbacks, yeah, for sheds and one or two small things. But otherwise, we sent all of it to town meeting, not just the sheds. And it was just moving.
But why did you do that? Oh, you did that for location, that's all you did. Nothing's changed in the zoning. If I go back to the previous year, it's the same thing, except for the areas that we voted to change.
I like to err on the side of caution.
I can see that.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't move things around in the zoning ordinance and have someone pick it up and go, whoa, things moved. This is different, but it didn't go to town here, you know, town meeting.
Well, that's what I, I'm just here to say, I need clarification. It may say that at the top, but when you go to here, it doesn't say in the district that it's, in the section it's supposed to be in. That's all I'm saying. Some technical term, I'm dealing with lawyers every day. They're friendly. You wanna look at that and go through it a little bit more, talk to the next meeting?
I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah, it's a simple enough request.
Yep.
It's just a matter of getting it into the document in a format that's user-friendly so that you can do your job effectively. And then bringing it to town meeting to get it approved by the voters.
If we have to, we'll check into that, okay? I understand, I understand Jen's concern there, okay? If it's clerical stuff, we never really had to and where we came, where I'm used to. But there are some different people. We haven't changed anything.
No, there's been no substantive change, but clerical changes. And I can understand the point of view of someone who's picking this up and seeing that something has moved. Whether they understand what's moved or not and that the substance hasn't changed, it could raise red flags and create a hassle that we don't need.
Okay.
So do you wanna move like the actual provisions or sections of the tables back to the individual districts? Or do you wanna just clean up the reference language?
I think both. Moving the sections of the table to the relevant sections that apply to those pieces of the table and then giving them a number that we can report out. That way, we've got belt and suspenders to cover any legal questions that may arise.
So you wanna break down the table and put it into all the sections that we just took it out of?
Yeah, but not, not as straight verbiage in the sections, just as a table at the beginning of each section. This table shall be for this section and so on.
I mean, I don't have a problem with doing anything, but I read it and I get it.
Yeah, me too.
Go back to section 300. You go back to section 300, it's right there.
Section 300, table 1. If we define it like that.
If you defined it as table 1, I mean, I guess that would make it more clear. I don't know what we have to do beyond that because then we're just reversing what we did, we already did.
Not entirely reversing it because we are keeping the table format.
But the purpose of the table was to put it all in one section.
To get all of it out of there.
Which requires a lot of page flipping from what we heard.
But if you have that listed as like 300-10, and then put that 300-10 in each one.
Yep.
They're not going just to 300, they know
That reduces the confusion there.
They tell you exactly where it is.
And then the, if you do it in the index at the beginning.
Yep.
Okay. Referring to the setback location and referring to it all the way through, that clarifies it as well.
Yep.
But I'm just trying to say, when you look at it, Steve, you're right, but it's not under the setback district.
Yep.
That's what I'm referring to. Maybe that should be rolled back into the setback underneath that section, under the bottom line of it somewhere. You're right. I think, refer to the section here, it's 300 for dimensional. You could put it blip, 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 and you're done. Okay? I'm just saying. There are those who look at books line by line and those who look at the paragraph and get what's there. That's what I'm saying.
What I just heard was you could make some of the people happy some of the time. And you make other of the people happy other
Basically, that's how it works.
As long as you all know that you'll never make everybody happy.
I like the idea that it was done to clean things up. I like the idea of adding a cross-reference back to the original table.
That's all I'm saying, cross it back so just cross-reference it back, that's all I'm saying.
So then the index.
When I write up a zoning thing and I denied it and I had to do it and reference back to the district, that's all I can reference it back is to the district. 300. Now, 300's got A, B, C, D, D all the way down to, oops, we got a chart somewhere in the middle of it. I wanna refer to something with a number. I have to.
Right, so we have a number there.
The zoning side of it is where I'm in all time.
And then you'll have in the index
Done.
Listed as setbacks and dimensional chart.
It's all right, I'll be explaining it to the zoning board on this whole thing, referring to it. And they'll get it. But they, it can be a stumbling block for somebody who may not agree with it, who is an aggrieved butter. That's what I'm saying, okay? Never happens, you know, never.
Gotcha.
Just cut a tree and you'll notice everywhere it will show up. That's all I had tonight was to be here and enjoy this with you. Hope you all have a good night. Can I leave?
We know it was truly about our company.
I'm thrilled by everyone of you.
I have no, I like what I do. Jen knows, we banter, that we do it for the reasons we like. Jen knows, we banter, that we do it for the reasons we like. Okay? But. I'm impressed, you guys have done. Seen this board very dry for years, you guys have got it as dry, keep up the good work.
Milwaukee party.
And these two here in the corner. I tell ya, they're my heroes. You're gonna kick me in the ass these days, I hope. ZBA tomorrow.
Does it meet them?
Yeah.
It's not on the, uh.
Right.
They're the town, town.
Oh, yeah.
Boundary.
Now, Kevin, the town website is showing the ZBA meeting next week.
Next week, okay, I'm on by the week, I'm not surprised.
Hey, show up tomorrow, just in case. Actually, it was just, it was just in the newspaper, the Hudson Litchfield. I don't know what the date was, but it was just in last Friday, so.
When did last Friday?
So it would be too early to have it this week.
Thank you.
The fourteenth.
Thank you.
Tomorrow's the Department of Environmental Services info session.
I'm surprised Steve's got a night bag, I remember when he got the Galaxy.
The what?
Remember that? Phone you have with all the.
Yeah, my first smartphone.
Oh, my God.
What was that, ten years ago?
I remember that one.
I just got another one. Gotta keep up to date.
It has.
Unbroken screen? With an unbroken screen. You'd be amazed what they give you for.
Thank you, Kevin.
Good night.
Good night.
Let the trade in with the, with the screen broke?
My phone's destroyed. Yeah, I looked like it, yeah.
All right.
Right along?
Moving right along. Exactly.
Master plan?
Master plan, population and housing. So, data for the first, four and a half pages is updated. You know, it doesn't sound like a lot. But instead of doing master plan updates, I was sifting through all these other regulations and bits. Um, so. Just switch gears. Um. My plan is just to kinda keep plugging away, I mean, pages for, you know, the first four pages, four and a half pages, I mean, it's all, it's all just, it's numbers. It is what it is. There's not much to say about it. But definitely happy to take some, some general feedback. In terms of plan of attack, I'm just gonna keep plugging away, going through the data tables and updating the text associated with each table. There are some sections towards the end. We can get to page twenty, it talks about growth management. Um, fair share analysis. Alternative housing arrangements and opportunities. Those sorts of fun sections that, um, I will follow your lead for how, you know, if you want them, if you wanna talk some, if you wanna tackle them anew. Or how you wanna approach those good sections.
You looking for an answer tonight?
Whatever you wanna have an answer.
Okay.
Terms of growth management, I don't think you've had a growth management ordinance in effect for a while.
Nope.
Um. And. For fair share. Methodology is from. This one was done in two thousand and one, I think there was a slightly updated version that came out like in about two thousand and five. I don't think anyone's done anything on fair share analysis since, even though state statutes near, now reference regional fair share. Um. We could instead replace this with, um, who was, was it Frank who had done the initial review of, um, workforce housing and affordability relative to the statutes? Couple of years back. We could do something similar to that. Huh?
Kevin did some work on that.
Kevin had done that, yeah, it was, I think it was Kevin and Frank.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I mean, we could pull something along those lines in and update it. Um, you know, something to address the workforce housing statutes. Your call what you include in your master plan there. So. And what you wanna discuss.
For some rea- reason or another, I didn't catch this one, I haven't read it. I'm gonna own it. I'm gonna need you.
It's okay. Right. I mean, one of the things we can look at is, as we get through the housing, um, the housing cost tables, where we just kinda look at what median prices are. We can start looking at that from a perspective of, of how does Litchfield compare in and amongst its peers? Uh, in the relative affordability of homes for sale in the community? And then kinda do a comparison to what it says in the statutes, and kinda go from there.
That sounds like a reasonable approach. Does NRPC have any existing data sets that could be mined to pull that out easily? Or is this something we have to take on as a fresh effort?
We have our housing needs assessment that was just finished a year and a half ago, that we can pull from.
Okay, good.
And it does regional, so it does each town.
I'm noticing the real estate market conditions are starting to change, there's an evolution underway. I don't know how, how.
Yeah. The sales data and the rent data would have to get updated, but, um, we have your housing packages that. We just pull their. We have these fabulous Excel workbooks, um, that you just pull your communities or your, your region and already done for you. Pretty snazzy data set, um, so it makes our life very easy to update that information.
Do trends and projections?
Um, for population, yes. For housing units, hmm, you know, we can project, you know, kinda take it as a function of population projections, and looking at how, um, that relates. Uh, for housing units, or, I mean, actually, we do have something for housing units that goes out to twenty forty, and builds off of the population projections. Um, one of the tricks to that will be, there are new statewide population projections coming out in the next month or so. Um, I've seen the preliminary draft for municipalities. Um, the data model that's used for the housing unit piece is built off of the twenty thirteen projections. Might be a little bit of a mismatch, but I don't think the updated population projections are gonna be hugely different from the twenty thirteen iteration, so I think it'd still be valid. So yes, we do have projections, but that's just for quantities, not prices.
There is no crystal ball?
No. No one does work. You can tell which tables have been updated and which haven't.
That's the ones that are referencing two thousand and one.
Mm-hmm. Although I did forget to change the title on one. Table two dash three. Still says nineteen sixty to two thousand. We have added two thousand and ten.
So is there an ask?
Touching base.
I'll go read this.
There you go. Um, just the, kinda the general comments I use to kinda at least direct my time and energy. So. Enough for now.
Well, I guess in two thousand and two, the, uh, projections for the, uh, population were a little off.
They were wretched.
They were what?
They were wretched. Um.
What, why do you, why do you say that?
Well, because they had us to two thousand and five, at two thousand and two, that they were guessing that two thousand and five was gonna have eighty-eight fifty-six.
Right.
We're around about that right now.
See, I thought we were like at ten thousand and change.
We're like eighty-nine hundred.
Mm-hmm.
So two thousand and fifteen, they had us at ten seven.
Yeah, they were extremely high. So, yeah, two thousand and ten.
Eleven, eleven seven, I don't know if we could fit that many people.
Yeah, two thousand and ten, you were eighty-two seventy-one.
I just remember, uh, looking for statistics when I was first considering joining the board. And I did a back of the napkin per, no, calculation based on what trend looked like. And it was, the only thing I remember is it was thirty thousand in twenty thirty.
No.
My back of the napkin projections.
So here's, here's why your back of the napkin projections were off, and here's why the old projections were off. From the sixties through the nineties, growth was exponential in southern New Hampshire. And what happened, started happening in the two thousands that we didn't see until too late, was that that growth started to not, not only taper off, it essentially went to zero. Essentially died. And in some communities, it plummeted. The other side of it is, we started seeing more people in our older age brackets, which meant our natural population, um, change wasn't as high. Um, so on top of that, you got more people, your mortality rates are, your, your your deaths are increasing, you also have fewer births.
Yeah, right.
So you take and add all those people, all those things together, and you don't have that mass in migration, in migration from Massachusetts, and, I mean, basically, our community's flatlined in the two thousands. Um, and when you're doing the projections, you really only have at ten-year intervals, really good data. And one of the things that threw the projections was that, in those, the intervening intervals, the only way to kind of guess where you're at is we use building permit data. And the problem is, is not all communities in New Hampshire do certificates of occupancy. So the only unit that you have to measure by consistently across the state is the issuance of a building permit. So just because a building permit is issued, doesn't mean that unit ever becomes occupied. So we were measuring population growth, um, based on building permits, but no one was moving in. In fact, not all of those houses were even completed in the two thousands, and particularly as we got to two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, and the market crashed. Um, so we had these numbers on the books that never were realized. Um, and so that further through the projections.
That's interesting, because I do remember the numbers I was looking at were in the ten thousands for Litchfield.
So.
Obviously, that was off.
Yeah, so we're now, yeah, they're, they're more, they are closer to the tens, um, for looking out to twenty forty. And I think, I think folks, if, if anything, at this point, the projection that we have, the fault that, that they may see, there's a couple of things that we know. One, we don't know, um, what's gonna happen with millennial generation. They've been deferring, um, childbearing. And so, um, your birth rates are really low right now. And we don't know if all of a sudden, they will compress, um, the years in which they will, uh, decide to have children into a smaller window of time in their lifespans. Um, and so we could end up with a baby boom. Um, and, and it, where you'd have folks that suddenly decide within, you know, five, ten year time span to all have their two, three children, that they would've had a spread over a twenty year, you know? Um, so there's that, that we don't know. And then we, you know, migration. If for some reason, um, Massachusetts suddenly just starts going through the roof again, and folks start looking at New Hampshire again as a more affordable place to live and commute into Massachusetts, that could then send migration rates back up. Um, we're already looking at migration rates increasing, just not nearly to replicate what we saw in the, like, the seventies and eighties in particular. So, there's a couple of things out there, so if anything, the new projections might be a little too low if all of a sudden, people start moving back to New Hampshire, and if all of a sudden, people start having babies again. But the thing that we do know definitively will temper it is, is deaths. And, on, you know, when you have a large share of your population that's moving into the seventy-five and eighty-five plus brackets, it's, it is what it is. So. That's your statistics for the night.
Is there gonna be a quiz later?
No.
Well, now that we've ended with death.
And the potential for millennials to start having babies all at once. We can leave it there if you want. It's on.
Any other she has? Uh, minutes for July nineteenth?
I read them, they look great. I moved that we accept the minutes that were written.
You have a second?
I will second.
No, 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 no.
I will second.
There you go. Any comments, corrections? Not appearing, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed, abstained?
Abstained.
Passes five zero one. Anybody have any updates? Steve?
Nope.
Okay. Uh, next meeting will be.
On September?
Sixth.
Sixth.
At seven P M. Hope people can join us then. Anything else anybody has? entertain a motion for German?
So moved?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, abstained? Passes six zero zero.
Second? September second?
Yep.
Thank you.
Seventh.
Seventh.
Sixth.
Uh, there we go.
September.
September.
September sixth.
You're the one one.
There we go. Done.